All right. Well, I am Mark Allen Powell and we are back for the third in a series of four stewardship videos for the South Carolina Senate. The first one, two weeks ago, we talked about sort of the, what the Bible means by stewardship in general. Created framework. Last time we talked about creation. This week, by request, we will talk about the offering. Not just stewardship of money and finances in general, which would be a very big topic, but specifically the offering. And then next week, as a teaser, let me tell you, we're going to talk about peace and justice. And of the four talks, that is the one where I am going to have some things to say that I'll. My guess is you've never heard before. A lot of what I'm doing in these first three talks is the church has gotten its teaching on stewardship right for decades. And what I'm sharing is nothing new. It's what it's what bishops and teachers of the church have been saying for, you know, all my life. I just try to say it in my own inimical way, and I try to make it interesting. But it's really not new information, no new insights. But next time when we talk on peace and justice issues. Well, I have some things to say that you likely have not heard before. So I, I hope that that will be intriguing to you. Today, tonight, we're going to talk about the offering. We'll start by imagining, picture yourself in ancient Israel. In the early years before there was a temple. The community gathers to worship around some rudimentary altar. And each person brings an offering to God. Some have drink offerings that they pour out on the altar until the liquid is gone. Others have grain offerings, sheaves of wheat that they bring and they place on the offering. And they light them on fire. A few may even bring birds or small animals which are sacrificed and then like the wheat consumed in the flames. What is the point? Well, the basic point seems to have been this. Worshippers brought things that they valued to the altar. And left them there. They gave them up. They gave them away. Then liquid was poured out. The animals were slaughtered. The grain was incinerated. People gave offerings to God as an act of worship. And those offerings were simply destroyed. I wonder what would happen in a modern church? If we collected the offering on Sunday morning, set the plates on the altar and then tossed it a match, burning up everybody's money. I do know that that would be illegal. It is against the law to burn or destroy US currency. And yes, I also realize that most people probably write checks. So I, for them, it wouldn't really matter, but my point is that many people in modern congregations would be appalled if the offerings they gave to the church were simply destroyed rather than put to some good use. Of course, that only makes sense. But then what was going on in ancient Israel? The grain, the animals, even the drink offerings. These were ancient equivalents of money. The Israelites didn't have cash or checks or bank accounts. For them, their money was their wine, their oil, their sheaves of wheat, animals from their flock or herd. This was their version of money. And they found it necessary, worthwhile at least, to give away their money, their possessions as a way of worshiping God. It's very much like burning up the money on the altar. The point was not what happened to the grain after it was placed on the altar. The point was simply putting that grain on the altar in the first place. So now I have to just speculate, but I sometimes imagine that after a time, someone in Israel must have said, you know, it's kind of a waste to just put this grain on the altar and burn it up. And maybe we could give it to the poor instead. Or maybe we could give it to the priests and, you know, it could be like their salary. Such suggestions had obvious merit. But the problem would come when over time people began to forget the real reason for making the offerings. They begin to think, God wants me to give up some of my grain so that the poor can be fed. Or so that the priests can be paid. But that had not been the original idea. Such concerns were only afterthoughts. And even if they were good afterthoughts, they did not represent the real reason for the offerings. The primary purpose of the offering was not to help the poor or to pay the priests. The primary purpose of the offering was worship. Indeed, worship in a way that some people would say was wasteful. Remember the woman who poured the oil on the feet of Jesus? And his disciples responded, why is this being wasted? Worship. I don't know for sure if, you know, anything like that happened in ancient Israel, but something similar has happened in Christian churches. If you were to take a survey, go around and ask people, I think you would find that many people in our congregations today think that the reason we have an offering during the Sunday morning service is because the church needs to pay its bills. And also wants to do good things with the money that is collected. And of course, churches do need to pay their bills and most churches probably do use their offering dollars to do good things. But actually, that is not why we have an offering during the Sunday morning service. The reason we have an offering on Sunday morning is to give people a very meaningful way of worshiping God. The most ancient form of worship, the most biblical form of worship of all. When I was a child, I remember my mother used to hack us all in the station wagon. She would drive us to church on Sunday morning and I remember hearing her say, we are going to worship God. That's why I thought we went to church. Six days a week, God blesses us. And on Sunday, we go to give thanks. I just sort of grew up thinking that that's why people went to church to worship God. I continued going to church most of my life and I actually found a lot of other reasons to go. Sometimes the sermons are helpful. Sometimes the music is inspiring. Sometimes the people are friendly. Sometimes I get a lot out of it. But I guess mom really drooled it into my head because I have never, ever thought that those are the why I go to church. I don't go to church to hear helpful sermons or to listen to inspiring music. Or to visit with friendly people. I go to church to worship God. For one thing, I don't always get a lot out of it. One thing I have discovered as a lifelong churchgoer is that there is hardly ever a Sunday that I could not go to church and find something to complain about if I were so inclined. But I remember what my mother said and I wonder if maybe it's not about pleasing me. Every day of the week, God blesses us and on Sundays we go and give thanks. We worship God. We give thanks because God is so good to us. And nothing could stop that from happening. Not boring sermons or bad hymns or annoying pumates. We can always worship God. We can always give thanks to God for being so good to us. Eventually, when I was all grown up, though it took me a while, I discovered something else. There is perhaps no better way to give thanks than with a gift. When someone does something nice for you, you give them a gift. Maybe to say thank you. When you love someone, you usually want to give them things. Gifts that say, I love you. I don't know about you. I realize I've been told I'm a bit of a romantic and I won't want to assume everyone is the same emotional temperament. But when I love someone, I don't just want to give them something. I want to give up something for them. I want to give them something that costs me something. In any case, that is why we have offerings during the church service. And I did not know that for a long time. I used to think it was because the church needed to collect some money to pay its bills. So every Sunday, as long as the people are there, we take a little break from worship to conduct some necessary business. Pass the plates around, collect some money to keep the lights on another week, and then we go back to worshiping again. I thought that, I think, for a long time. But that's not what the offering is. When we take up the offering, we are not taking a little break from worship in order to have a fundraising ritual. The offering is a high point in the worship service. It gives us a chance to say thank you to God, to offer a gift that says, I love you. It is worship. Arguably, it is the high point of the service. The most worshipful moment of all. Think about that. We come to church to worship God. And at no other point in the service are we provided with so pure an opportunity for worship as this. So much of what happens in the service is for our benefit. The lessons, the prayers, the sermon, even holy communion, the Eucharist, the body and blood given for us. Most of what happens in the service is for us to inspire us, to bless us, to edify us, to comfort us, to guide us. So I love it. I get lots of good stuff, all that law and gospel. When I go to church on Sunday morning, I get all kinds of good stuff for me. But I, I thought we were there to worship God. When do we actually get to do that? Hymns, sometimes, and the offering. Those are the key moments in any worship service where worship actually takes place. Where we give something to God instead of just receiving more from God. Six days a week, God blesses us. On Sundays, we go to give thanks. So I, I never understand it when people say, I don't go to church anymore because I don't feel like I get anything out of it. You don't get anything out of it? Why did you think it was about you? I go because I hope God gets something out of it. Worship is not about us getting blessed. It's about us blessing the Lord. We go to church to bless God. I guess maybe I'd quit going if I somehow became convinced that God wasn't getting blessed or worshipped or glorified. But I wouldn't quit going to church just because I thought I wasn't getting something out of it. Somebody says, I didn't like that hymn. I always wonder, did God like it? I mean, I don't think we were singing it for you, were we? Okay, anyway. We go to church to worship God. And as far as I'm concerned, the two most important parts of any service are the hymns and the offering. That's when we really get to worship God. And just between us, for me, it's easy sometimes to sing the words to some wonderful hymn and not even pay attention to what I'm singing. I'm just daydreaming and not even listening to the words that are coming out of my own mouth. But it is not easy for me at least to give my money away and not know what I am doing. When I am giving my money away, I am always fully aware of that. I've had to work at this a bit. I, I developed a little discipline to help and I don't, yeah, I'm nobody's role model and I don't expect anybody to just, you know, do what I do. Though I'll tell you what I do anyway, just to see what you, what you think. First, as a matter of support for the congregation, I have set up an automatic fund transfer to give what I think is a responsible portion of my income to the church every month. And this gets done whether I attend services or not. Whether I'm present, out of town. You know, I, once a year, my dear wife and I, we sit down, we talk about it, we look at the church budget sometimes. Every now and then we've had a talk with the financial secretary and we figure out with our income, whether it's gone up or down. We figure what we think would be our responsible support for the church. Only have to do that once a year because then we call the bank and we set it up and it's done and we don't even think about it. One thing nice about that is it gets done regardless of how spiritual I might be feeling in any given week. Because some weeks I might love Jesus a whole lot and feel very grateful to God for all that God has done for me. And other weeks I might only think about Jesus once or twice, and I might not feel particularly grateful for anything. But the church's operating expenses stay the same regardless of my spiritual vicissitudes. So make the decision once a year, decide how much we're going to give to support the church and then you set it up for the bank. That's done. But it has nothing to do with the offering. It's kind of just like paying bills and being responsible member of an organization to which we decided to belong. But I still want to bring something to the church to put in the offering plate. Because that's when we get to worship God. I don't want to just sit there with my mouth shut when people stand up and sing a hymn. And I don't want to just sit there in my pew as they pass the plate up and down the pew and people just take it and pass it on and pass it on and pass it on because they're probably thinking, oh, you know, I have automatic fund transfers set up on the bank. Why would I put any money in the offering plate? The offering is not about collecting money to support the church budget. The offering is about giving a gift of worship to God. Just, you know, pass the plate on and not put anything in it. It's like sitting there during the hymn and not singing. It's a chance to take part in the most worshipful part of the worship service. But I am not at all judgmental toward all those people that do just pass it on and don't think about it because for most of my life I was one of them. I mean, I didn't get this for a long time. I thought the offering was a little fundraising ritual and we took a break from worship. I didn't get that it actually is perhaps the single most worshipful part of the entire worship service. Well, now I've taken care of my support for the congregation, for the bank. I still want to bring a gift every Sunday and to make it meaningful. What I like to do, yeah, it doesn't always work, but what I try to do is to find something every week that I can give up in order to have an offering on Sunday. It's sort of just symbolic, but I don't want to say it's just symbolic. I want to say it's symbolic. Powerfully symbolic. So I try to find something. Maybe we go out to eat and I'm thinking of getting cheesecake and then I all of a sudden think, ah, instead of getting this cheesecake, I can put that eight dollars in my pocket and it will be my offering this Sunday. And if possible, I actually take the eight dollars out of my billfold and fold it up and stick it in my pocket right next to my car keys. Or maybe I hear about Beyonce's new album and I go to stream it and I think, you know what? I can always play it on Spotify or, you know, Alexa will play it for me anytime I ask her to. I, I don't really absolutely not have to own it. I like owning it, but I, I could put that eighteen dollars and ninety nine cents in my pocket and it could be my offering this week. If possible, I take the money out of my billfold and stick it in my pocket. I try to think of something every week. If I can't or I don't, the week just gets away from me. My default is on Saturday mornings, I usually get together with some friends and we have a cappuccinos together. And if I haven't thought of anything to give as an offering on Sunday by then, well, everybody knows why I don't drink a cappuccino and I take the money out and pocket it instead. I don't like doing that. I always try to find something before Saturday for three reasons. Number one, it doesn't actually seem like a very good gift, just giving up a cappuccino. I've always feel like I'd kind of sloughed off on my giving to God that week and I should have found something better. Two, it's embarrassing that all my friends know this. And three, maybe most important, I really like those Sunday, those Saturday morning cappuccinos. I really like them and I would much rather have found something else to give up earlier in the week so that I don't have to give that up. But anyway, whatever, however the week goes, I carry the money around in my pocket. Every night I take it out and I put it next to my car keys and the little dish by the door. Take it up and put it back in my pocket again the next day. Carry it around all week. And when I go to church, I am just waiting for the plate to come around. And when it does, I take the money out of my pocket and I say a little prayer. God, mom was right. You are good to us all week long. I am so grateful to you. And here is a little token of thanks. You know, I would have liked that cheesecake. I would have liked to have owned that new Beyonce album. I really would have liked to have had a cappuccino yesterday morning, but I gave that up because I want to make a little token gift of gratitude to you. You are so good to us and I thank you. Well, I started doing that a few years ago. I think I started it out as a metin discipline. I was just going to do it during Lent. But then I kept it up. Anyway, turns out the offering is now my favorite part of the service. I've told the pastor, I think Sunday service is going to be so too long some week, cut your sermon. Or, you know, maybe you're gonna, don't need an anthem or, there's a lot of stuff in the liturgy, doesn't have to be there every week, but don't you ever cancel the offering? That's why I'm here. I come to church to make an offering. We started out a couple of weeks ago by saying stewardship is not just a fancy word for fundraising. That's true. But stewardship does apply to our money. Everything we are, everything we have belongs to God. For many of us, that really hits home when we consider our finances. Here are two quotes from two different religious leaders. First, Martin Luther once said that everyone needs to experience three conversions of heart and mind and purse. Often, God gets your heart first. You feel some kind of devotion for God. Then God gets your mind. You learn your catechism, confess the creeds, add some content and substance to your faith. So it isn't just about how you feel. And then, according to Luther, God gets your wallet, your purse. And when you commit your mammon, your money to God, then God really has you. Two, Billy Graham once said, I have found that when people get their attitude toward money right, it straightens out just about every other aspect of their life. What I like about those two quotes is that, as you may know, Martin Luther and Billy Graham were not doctrinal bedfellows. They would have disagreed on a lot of things, but they sure were in solidarity on this one. And neither Luther nor Graham were conducting some kind of fundraising campaign when they said these things. They said them because they were interested in people's spiritual and social health. And they both had found that our relationship with God becomes more real when it affects our finances. When we acquire, regard, manage and spend our money differently than we might otherwise. So as that indicates, there's a lot more to financial stewardship than just giving money to the church. We could talk about what we do to acquire our money in the first place and whether we are doing so in ethical ways that are pleasing to God. We could talk about how we regard our money, our attitude toward our money. That no one can serve to masters, God and Mammon, and the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil. We could talk about how we manage our money in ways that are pleasing to God. We don't want to hoard it like that guy in Luke chapter 12 who kept building bigger barns to keep his stuff in. We don't want to waste it all like the prodigal son in Luke chapter 15 who went to the far country and spent his, all the money he had about a thought for the future. Lot we can say about financial stewardship. But one part of it indeed is giving to the church. And that's what we happen to be talking about this evening. Kind of summing up and the risk of repetition. I think of giving to the church in two categories. I was talking about that earlier without spelling it out in so many terms. I, I label the categories duty and delight. Giving to the church is a duty. Giving to the church is a duty. And a delight. They're not rigid categories. They may overlap, but first. We have a duty. An obligation, if you will, to support the congregation of which we are a part. The Bible teaches that every member of a congregation ought to do his or her fair share. To support the church and its mission. We call this proportionate giving. You can read about it in chapters eight and nine of Second Corinthians. Paul's second letter to the Corinthians, chapters eight and nine. That's where we get the words fair share. It's where we get the words proportionate giving. People who have greater means should give more than people with less. But. If there's a problem with this in congregations. It's that many people have no clue. What their fair share of the church's operating expenses might be. So I tell this little story. It's basically a true story. I knew a guy, call him Gary. Who liked to gather with some other men twice a month for a boys' night out. They would all get together at somebody's home and. Uh, let's just say maybe they would, uh, uh, they would play Uno and drink lots of Pepsi. Something like that, anyway. Anyhow, Gary did this every two weeks and there was, uh, always a. Basket on the snack table for making contributions. You know, they had some, maybe some pizza or some. Uh, various snacks out and, uh, basket to make some contributions and Gary would always toss in five dollars. Then one time as they were leaving, he saw his friend. Toss in a twenty. And then a ten. And then a five. Thirty-five dollars. Did you just put thirty-five dollars in there? He asked. I mean, it can't possibly cost that much to buy these snacks. I only put in five dollars every week. And his friend said, yeah, I know. It actually costs about twenty dollars a person. So. I put in my twenty. And then, you know, since you only put in five, I toss in another fifteen to make up for you. Moral of the story is kind of obvious. If you don't do your fair share of supporting the congregation of which you are a part. Someone else has to give more than their fair share to make up for you. We, of course, don't expect everyone to give the same amount. We, we get proportionate giving. Uh, but still, when some people give less than what would be responsible for them. Other people have to give more. Than they really should have to give. And they a lot of, they've got a lot of other things they'd probably like to do with their money too. The truth is, in many congregations, many people, including active members. Give far less than what would probably be their fair share of the church's expenses. So what happens? I mean, you might think the, the church will fail to meet its budget. And, you know, that can happen, but not usually. More often, something else occurs. Other people in the church. Give far more. Than what would be their fair share. In order to make up for the lack. I have noticed over the years that no one ever wants to say this out loud. But it is what happens in many of our churches. Some people basically carry the weight for others. Not because of, I mean, we expect proportionate giving. And if people don't have a lot of assets or resources, we don't expect them to contribute nearly as much as other people. But people who are completely able. To give far more than they do and might be expected to do so. And they don't. Well, other people have to make up for them. I only bring that up because. Like the guy in my story, Gary. I think people just do this innocently. They don't know it's the case. They don't really think about it that much. They don't have any idea what their fair share would be. And they probably think they are giving their fair share. Uh, without a clue that. They actually are not being very responsible in their support for their church and doing their duty. Okay, well, you know, that story could be a little bit guilt inducing and I'm sorry. But if it is, it's not actually completely my fault. In any case, I'll end with a happier one. Cause I said that giving to the church can be both a duty. And a delight. The duty part is we try to figure out what would be our responsible share. Give to the church and then we make an arrangement with a bank or whatever to have that taken care of and we do it. But a Pentecostal pastor once told me this story about giving. He grew up in a small town. When he was about eight years old, his mother. Sent him to the forest shop to get some flowers for the dining room table. He had to walk through town carrying the flowers by the way back to his house. And he says, I still remember, I was so embarrassed walking down the street. Holding these flowers because I was afraid some of my friends might see me and tease me. Why would they tease him? I, I guess maybe carrying flowers makes him look like a sissy or something. Oh, it does not take a whole lot to make an eight-year-old boy feel self-conscious. All right, so where'd you get the flowers? Anyway, he was, uh, he says, that's all I remember about that. Was I really did not want to get those flowers and walk through town carrying them. To my mom so she could put them on the table, but I did it. I did it because I was an obedient son and I did what my mother asked me to do. I did what I was supposed to do. Sometimes giving to the church is kind of like that. You don't really want to do it. You just do it because it's what you're supposed to do. It's the right thing to do. It's your duty as a responsible church member. But he said. Ten years later. I still lived in the same town. And I was no longer eight years old. I was eighteen years old. And I was in love. With a young woman. I saved some money from a little job I had. And I went to that forest shop, only one in the town. I bought her some flowers. And I was walking down the same streets. It's kind of deja vu moment. Walking down the same street I had before, carrying this bouquet of flowers, but you know what this time? I, I, I wasn't thinking about what somebody might say or what somebody might think if they saw me or I know. I was only thinking about. Two things. How happy she would be. To get flowers. And how fortunate I was. To be the one bringing them to her. That, he said. Is giving. Not because it's your duty. Giving out of sheer delight. Worship. That's what the offering in church is about. So to come to an end. That would be my hope and prayer for all of you. I hope that you know everything belongs to God and that we are simply stewards of God's gifts. I hope you do the responsible thing and support your congregation in ways that are appropriate for your means. But most of all. I hope that you fall in love with God. And that when you come to church, you might bring your gifts, your offering. Thinking only those two things. How happy God is. To receive whatever it is we are able and willing to offer. And how incredibly fortunate we are. To be the people. Making. These offerings. I thank you. That's what I have for you today. Now, questions? Comments? Testimonies from anybody else? Anyone?
What about the ten percent that the Bible talks about?
Hi there. Talked about tithing. Wow, that could be a subject for an entire another, uh, video. Cause I, you'll notice I didn't mention tithing. Uh, there'd be a, a couple of reasons for that. I don't think it's absolutely clear that the Bible, the biblical expectation is for people to give ten percent of their income to the church. We do, the Bible does sometimes talk about tithing and giving ten percent of your income. It never specifies that you would give it to the church. Uh, there might be other ways, you know, I mean, for one thing that, that it was never a, uh. The situation was never the same as ours. Uh, when they were giving it to the temple, the temple was. Rather different from a, a church today. But also I actually think in terms of people's, uh, um. Means and income and all today, ten percent might be a, a little low for what many people would be able to give. Um, I, I think that, uh, uh. I, I, I think it can be. I think it can be arbitrary, but I also want to say it's, it is a worthy goal. And it is, uh, it is, it certainly has a lot of a, a, a traditional, um, mark. Uh, so. Let me, let me, let me put it this way. Uh, a woman came up to me, uh, one time and, uh, asked me. Do I have to tithe? And I said, no, you do not have to tithe. I've got really great news for you. You don't have, you not only do you not have to tithe, you don't have to give anything at all. You can come to church every Sunday for the rest of your life. And you can participate in all the ministries of this church and send your children here. And we will pay for the Sunday school classes and the vacation Bible school. And you can have use of the building and everything and, uh, we will, we will take care of you as a beloved member of the family of this church. Even if you never put a single dollar or penny in the offering plate, you don't have to give anything. It's all free. It's all comes to you from the grace of God because God loves you and because we love you. But I got another question for you. Would you like to be the sort of person? Who is financially able? And spiritually willing? To give away ten percent of your money? If you get the vision in your head, your imagination, start it just as a dream. Imagine yourself as a person who is spiritually willing. To give away ten percent of her money. Not because she feels like she has to or ought to. But she's willing and eager to do it and she's also financially able to do it. And still live a good life. Would you like to be that person? Because if you would, I've got some good news for you. You almost certainly can be that person. I might have to attach footnotes, but I think that would be true for most people in most of our churches. And I've never met an ex-tither. People who, people who tithe their income, don't, you know. You guys say, well, I used to tithe, but I just decided, you know, that God wasn't worthy of it anymore. I'd rather spend my money on other things or I just wasn't able to get by on the ninety percent or I, you never, ever hear that. Yeah, so. All right. Is that a good enough answer for you? Yeah, what I don't do is I know there are churches that say, the Bible says you need to give ten percent of your money to the church. And if you don't do that, you're robbing God or something. I, I'm not convinced of that. I, I think that's. I, I, I don't think that's actually an accurate statement about the Bible. And in any case, I don't want to guilt people into giving. So, so, uh, yeah. I make it more of an invitation. Uh, imagine yourself being a person. Who is spiritually willing and financially able to give ten percent of your money. And, uh, you probably can be that person. Uh, you may need to grow spiritually. The Holy Spirit will do that. You know, generosity is one of the nine fruits of the spirit in Colossians chapter five. Uh, and, uh. You can, you can get a handle on your finances. The church has resources to help you do that. Anybody else? Another thought? Other comment?
Yes, uh, this is Gwen. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I just want to make a statement. I'm Gwen from Living Springs. I, I think it's something I always believe that the tithing stuff, it comes from the heart. And so I think from my confirmation class, uh, it's sort of like stuck with me. So I tithe once a month, but I can't, something in me, when I pass the offering plate. Or, uh, a bucket, so to speak, I, I have to save something to put in that. In that bucket or that offering plate to every Sunday. It just, uh. It's something there say, you have to put a dollar or something in that pail. I put it there every Sunday. Something compelled me to do that and it just has stuck with me, uh.
That's right. It's, it's taking part in the worship service. That's right. Uh, good. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. The ELCA talks a lot sometimes now about ten, ten eighty. Have you heard that? Uh, ELCA, uh, ten, ten eighty means, uh, save ten percent of your income. Give away ten percent of your income and live on eighty percent. That's just good financial advice. Uh, they don't get real specific. They don't necessarily say give the ten percent to your local congregation. Maybe you want to give some of it to Lutheran World Relief or who knows what or, yeah, whatever. There'd be, but they say. General, we don't want to be legalistic and have too many rules. But as a general guideline. Try to, try to save ten percent of your income. Try to give away ten percent of your income. I, my, my own, like, I mean, that's good, just good advice. I would say that's maybe especially good advice for people at a certain stage in life. And as you get closer to retirement, you probably want to save more than ten percent and, uh, you might, uh. And also it, sometimes in your life, you can give away more than ten percent. So. Uh, you don't want tithing to be like the ceiling. Uh, there would be people for whom ten percent would be. They'd really have to grow into that. That would be a real stretch for them to give that much, where there would be many people in our churches that could, you know. And could, could quite easily give considerably more than ten percent. And, uh, so, but. Uh, as we were just hearing, we give from our heart and we don't just want to. We, we don't, we don't want it to simply be that we're, um. Uh, we're. We're giving out of guilt. So. Uh, we give, we might indeed have a sense of duty from giving. I don't, I don't really feel like making an offering every single week. I do it because I think it's the right thing to do. I'm doing it out of. Out of a sense of responsibility and duty. But I, 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 I don't think it's a good idea to make people, to get people to give because they feel guilty. Okay, anybody else? Others? Thoughts?
Uh, my question goes back, uh, to, uh, I'm serving on, in a, an interim. A, a pastor, as a pastor in an interim ministry in a congregation. And during the pandemic. Our offering practices really changed.
Yes.
Uh, the offering plate was, well, we were worshiping, sometimes put outside on the lawn.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Disappointed, but I made the best of it. I said that, or wait for the offering to come around is the highlight of the worship service. And then the pastor started putting the offering plates outside somewhere and you're supposed to make your offering as you, as you come into church or something. And I thought, shoot, I should just pick my offering and go home, but I didn't, you know, because I don't wanna be the, uh. I don't wanna be the disgruntled old man that complains about how they're changing things. So I went with it.
But, uh, I guess what's happening is it was hard for us to get back into the, to the practices that we had before, you know. The ushers coming down the aisle, taking the offering plates, the visible practices that you see in the offering. Have dynamics that, you know, are visible to everybody.
I'm not a liturgical expert, but I've heard from people who are, who would say a lot of thought went into that, you know, we. A lot of thought went in to having the offering taken up and brought forward and singing an offer to her. And presenting the gifts and with a prayer of reception and, you know, that you. Uh, so, right, I, I would feel bad if we simply lost all that, you know, because of the pandemic and then haven't done. What we can to recover it. It's liturgically meaningful. Uh, yeah, but on the other hand, if that's not what your congregation is doing, don't. Don't be a complainer.
Yeah, this gave me a whole new perspective of the importance of the service. I, I really like this thought process and I intend to take it up. It, it's. New to me and I think it'll be good for me too.
Alright, good, thank you. Thank you all. Anybody else? We're about fifty-two minutes now. Uh, alright, my cat has been very well behaved. Behaved, she should get a treat. And, uh, next week, we will talk about justice and peace. And I promise you, I am going to share a couple of things from the Bible. That will probably be new to most of you, probably. Uh, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.